Subbing in as chair today, I would like to call the May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Middlesex College Board of Trustees to order. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
United States of America, we do represent one nation under God.
Notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Publics Meeting Act NJSA ten colon four dash ten has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting. Ms. Rowa, would you please do a roll call?
Good morning, Trustee Anderson. Trustee Beauties.
Present. Good morning.
Trustee Finkelstein. Trustee Jethwani. Trustee Oris. Trustee Palori. Trustee Patel. Trustee Raja.
Present.
Trustee Roman.
Present.
Trustee Sika. Trustee Taffet.
Here.
Mr. Taffet, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Good morning. In order to assist the Board Secretary in taking accurate minutes for this meeting, I would request that trustees identify themselves for the record when making and seconding motions for abstaining. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Trustees' regular meeting?
Still moved by Boris.
Moved by Trustee Oris. May I have a second? Second by Trustee Palori. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion's carried. Ms. Rowa, do we have any correspondence?
Vice Chair Taffet, there is no correspondence.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. McCormick, do we have a presentation this morning?
Vice Chair Taffet, we do. So we've been fortunate here to have great leadership in athletics, and in particular recently, we've had Rocco Constantino as our Athletic Director. As he's going to share with you in a minute, we're seeing a surge in interest among students, especially in Middlesex County, in coming to Middlesex College to be part of our great athletic programs. And so I turn it over to Athletic Director Rocco Constantino.
Thank you, Dr. McCormick, and thank you to the Board of Trustees and administrators who are here today for giving me the opportunity to share all the wonderful things our student athletes and coaches have accomplished this year. Very much looking forward to talking about this today. So thank you, and I appreciate this. Next slide. First, we're starting off with a couple of things that were highlights before we even got the year started. We kicked off our fall with our Middlesex softball team being honored by the Board of County Commissioners for winning the region last year and participating in the College World Series. We were up in Syracuse. We were one of only eight teams in the country to qualify. So that was great that we started the year with the Board of County Commissioners recognizing that feat. Next slide. And we also had our inaugural Hall of Fame Athletics Hall of Fame event this year right in this room. It was a wildly successful event financially and creating goodwill with alumni. It was something that really exceeded our expectations, thanks to the help of people like the SBCC Foundation, our marketing team, Dr. McCormick's support, and just general support on the college community. So Hall of Fame was great. We're in the process of developing a physical Hall of Fame as well, and this is something that we're looking to do every other year. So next year will be a planning year. Next Hall of Fame event will be Fall '24 is what we're planning for. Next slide. And this is to take a look at the sports we offered this past season. Next slide. So we had eleven sports this year, which is middle to top of the amount of sports offered by any two-year school in the state. We're constantly evaluating our programs to make sure we're offering programs that fit student needs and desires. Next slide. And again, sport enrollment is something that we've really been stressing with our coaches. We want our coaches to be actively recruiting and building large and healthy rosters and kind of moving things in the right direction. Next slide. And as you can see in this graph, we started tracking student athlete enrollment, sport enrollment about eight years ago. And this past year, we had our highest total yet. One hundred and seventy-nine students participated in our athletics programs. That was up from up by thirty-seven students from the previous year and about up by about twenty students from our all-time highs. So fantastic job by our coaches who really have been out there recruiting. And over ninety percent of our student athletes are from Middlesex County, so we're very happy to serve the students that are right here participating in the Greater Middlesex Conference. This is one of the things I think that we're most proud of. Next slide. And academic honors as well. We, again, our coaches have all bought into the idea that we are here to help prepare students for the next stage in their lives, and academics obviously plays a huge role in that. So we had forty-two of our student athletes in the fall had a three-point-two-five GPA or higher. All of our student athletes have to maintain full-time status unless they're going to be graduating in their final semester, then there's certain rules. They also have to maintain a certain GPA and reach academic standards to participate in athletics. We do very well here when compared to other colleges as well as far as number of students and percentages that receive academic honors. So again, this was something to be very proud of. Next slide. We had a lot of great accomplishments on the field as well. Last year was my first year here, and I thought we did phenomenal. This year, we kind of even exceeded that. Next slide. We have three student athletes who were named National Players of the Week in their sport. It's pretty incredible just to have one. Most colleges go without that. But we had three students who were recognized across the country for their performances. That was Carla Seefarth on softball. She's from South Brunswick. Jason Fasalo, our goalie for soccer, he was, he's from South River. And Isaiah Figaroa from the baseball team, he's from Old Bridge. And these were selected by a panel of people who are nowhere near New Jersey. They looked at their accomplishments and said these guys, students were great, and they got that National Player of the Week honor. Next slide. We compete in Region Nineteen, which is twenty-something schools depending on the sport. At the end of the year, there's All-Star teams selected among those twenty schools. So out of our, so far, we've had six student athletes that were named First Team All-Region, so among the best of the best in their sport, which is phenomenal. We're also awaiting the awards to be announced for baseball and softball, where we expect to have more. But again, this was another area where we exceeded what we did the previous year. Next slide. We had two student athletes who were chosen as the best athlete in their sport in the region, which again is a phenomenal accomplishment. Out of the hundreds of students that play these sports, like I said, these two male athletes were selected as the best players in their sport. And it was Michael Ches from men's volleyball from Woodbridge and Jamie Madrid from the men's soccer team from Perth Amboy, phenomenal representatives of our school. Jamie's here. He's going to stick around and graduate. Did very well in the classroom. And Michael, again, is a model student athlete, three-point-nine GPA. Fantastic volleyball player, but even better student. Next slide. And we have some All-Americans to talk about too, which is very exciting. Jamie was named First Team All-American in men's soccer. He's the only the second men's soccer player ever from Middlesex College to be a First Team All-American. And the first one, the previous one was from nineteen ninety-eight. So been twenty-five years since we had a First Team All-American, and it was very well earned by Jamie. Next slide. And just this past weekend, we actually had two national champions. Raven Orange is the defending national champion in the hurdles. She defended her title in pretty convincing fashion last weekend in Utica, so she's a national champion in the four-hundred-meter hurdles. And our men's four-by-four-hundred relay team also won the national championship in a very exciting come-from-behind win against some really great competition. And in doing so, they beat a school record that had stood for almost fifty years, nineteen seventy-four. So just phenomenal performance by these athletes. Next slide. Seven of our eight team sports qualified for the region tournament last year, which was great to see. Having this kind of department-wide success is pretty unique. There's only a couple of two-year schools I think in the state that really had this many teams qualify. So among the teams, we have our baseball coach CJ Mooney here today. They're participating this weekend coming up. They're in the semifinals of the region tournament. We had our, our men's volleyball team made the finals. And other, our women's basketball team had a real highlight too. They upset the number-one seed, RCSJ Glouster, to get to the region semifinals. One of the biggest upsets in the history of that tournament, we were told. So just a very, very good year as far as success on the court for our teams. Next slide. Another highlight of the year was our Middlesex College Invitational Track Meet. This year, we decided to try to, you know, we're targeting our track program as one area where we could expand as far as numbers and success. So this year, we decided to host our first track invitational in over twenty years, as far as we could tell. The event was hugely successful. We had over a thousand student athletes from ninety different colleges come and participate in the event, which was held at Piscataway High. Dr. McCormick came by to offer his support. Again, a huge success. We hope to do this next year and grow again. It was great for us financially and also as far as exposure. We, you know, we invited many four, there were more four-year schools than two-year schools here. So it was great for our students to be exposed to that and speak to other colleges about possibly continuing their career next year. So this was another great event. Next slide. Community engagement has been an initiative since I've gotten here, and I think this is another area where we really excel. Next slide. Our teams are encouraged to participate in events in the community, both going out in the community and also inviting the community here. We've done work with the food pantry at Middlesex, different food shelters. We've held food drives at our game, gone out and participated in Read Across America. We have our annual Pink Night where we raise awareness for breast cancer and, and honor somebody who has, who has passed away to cancer. We hold clinics. This is an area where we've grown. We hold many youth clinics in our gym for local youth to kind of hope to plant that seed, to make them familiar with Middlesex College at a young age and give them that idea that, that maybe they could see themselves in the future here. So again, phenomenal job by our teams as far as with community engagement this year. Next slide. And this was something that we really, another point of emphasis, our partnership with the Greater, Greater Middlesex Conference, High School Conference. Next slide. We really want to partner with the local high schools in a two-way partnership to, again, show them what we have to offer here at Middlesex with academics and athletics. Show them what that we have in our facilities. Kevin Delene has been very helpful. Anytime I go to Kevin and say, hey, the local high school wants to use our facilities for something or other, the college is very supportive of that. So last year, all we hosted was the Greater Middlesex Conference Basketball Tournament. This year, we grew on that. We hosted the Boys and Girls Middlesex Basketball All-Star Games, which was really big. We've been hosting a lot of different youth clinics from outside groups that are bringing local high schools to the gym. And then likewise, we're going out to the high schools and holding events there. That was something new that we did this year. We held our track invitational at Piscataway High. We played a soccer match at Edison High School. We used Highland Park High School for track practice. And just kind of, again, doing this at the local high schools, we feel exposes them to the level of competition that, that we have here and, and hopefully draws students to, to Middlesex. It helps in our recruiting initiatives. Next slide. And in recruitment, we are out there recruiting students. We do it in person. We do it at events. We do it all summer long. Right now, we have sixty-three students who have signed to commit to come here next year. That's a number that's up from fifty-one from last year, and we're still in the signing period, so we expect that to get you know, closer to seventy or even eighty. So we've done really well in signing new students to come this year. Like I said, we've already exceeded last year's number, and we still have a solid month to go for bringing more students in. Next slide. And just getting to the end here, I'd like to, you know, recognize our coaches for the effort, time and effort they put into giving our students a great experience. You know, we love being successful on the, on the athletic fields, but my message to our, our coaches is always let's give students the best experience possible at Middlesex College. We want them to enjoy their time here, to stay connected to Middlesex. We want them to look back fondly on the experience that they had here. I believe our coaches do a great job with that. I always say coaching, you know, they take time away from their family. They're here at nights, on weekends, Saturdays, Sundays. It takes a lot of dedication, and I can't say enough about the fantastic job that they've done all around in representing the college. Next slide. And we had two coaches that had milestone wins this year. CJ Mooney is here today. Our baseball head coach got his two-hundredth career win, which was fantastic this year. And Michelle Powell, our women's basketball coach, got her two-hundred-and-fiftieth career win, which, again, these are some of the higher totals among their peers and really a fantastic representation of the college. Next slide. And just in kind of summer, summer summary, I, we also have CJ here, our baseball coach, who's going to say a few words in a second. But again, it's been a fantastic year, and it, we can't have the success that we do without the support from Dr. McCormick and our administrative team. I see just about every person in this room I've interacted with in some way, asking them to support athletics, and they always come to bat for us. They always are supportive and always want to give our students the best experience. So we have students participating in the next level at schools like Goldie Beacom, Kane, Rutgers Camden, William Patterson, even going out to Division One schools like Dayton. Our students are doing well when they, when they leave here. And again, I think that's a direct reflection on our coaches and the support they receive from, from our administrative team. So thank you for that. And I'd like to call up our head baseball coach CJ Mooney just to say a few words.
Thank you, Rocco. Oh, I don't get a fancy slideshow. I get my cell phone there. I gotta look at myself. Thank you, Rocco, and thank you to the board and the administration for allowing me to come out and speak. My name is CJ Mooney. I'm the head coach here. Been the head coach for ten years, which is kind of crazy to think. Was a former student athlete here. I graduated in two thousand and ten, played baseball here in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. And our program has continued to grow every single year since I took over as really a twenty-three-year-old kid into where the program is today. The last two years, we have really taken that next step with the program and, and brought it onto the national scene. We've been a top-ten national program the last two years. Twenty nineteen, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two, we, we set the single-season program record for thirty-seven wins. This year, we're right behind it with thirty-six wins, with an opportunity to play in the region Final Four on Friday, only three wins away from the College World Series, which the program has never been to before, so it's definitely an exciting time in the program. But even more than the on-field success, what I'm most proud of is, you know, our graduation rates, our retention rates, our transfer rates. And all of our student athletes know before they even put on a Middlesex uniform what the expectations are in our program. When they sit in my office with mom and dad on a recruiting visit when they're seventeen, eighteen-year-old kids, you know, they understand that they're not just coming here to play baseball, right? They're coming here to get an education. They're coming here to grow as an individual, mature. And what I always say is they come in as an eighteen-year-old boy and they leave as a twenty-year-old man. Right? So we really want to prepare our, our student athletes to be successful, not only at the next level academically, athletically, but also set themselves up for a successful, you know, professional career and whatever it is that they choose, right? So like Rocco mentioned before, it's an exciting time in our program because a lot of our guys are going on to play at the next level. You know, one of our outfielders is going for a Division One scholarship at the University of Dayton. Two of our starting pitchers this year got athletic and academic scholarships to go play at Goldie Beacom. A lot of our guys are undecided at this point, whether they're going to end up at Caldwell, Rutgers Camden, William Patterson, Jersey City. There's a lot of options for our guys, so it's definitely an exciting time. I'll, I'll give you all just a brief rundown of, you know, what we provide for our student athletes in our program. It's from start to finish. We start in September for our fall season. We'll play anywhere from fourteen to sixteen fall scrimmages. A lot of NCA schools, we like to bring them on campus because we want to have Division One, Division Two, Division Three coaches on our campus to, you know, be able to showcase our athletes so they can eventually hopefully use this as a springboard to get to the next level. We have mandatory study hall and weight training three times a week in the offseason through October, November, and December. The guys know that this is, it's not optional. They have to be there or else they're probably not going to be successful in our program. So they know they need to be there and get it done academically and get it done in the weight room, conditioning. And then our fall season, I mean, I'm sorry, our spring season, we're going to play anywhere from forty-five to fifty games. And, and I want to thank the board for allowing the, the school to financially support us because I know it's, it's, it's a it is a expensive sport, and we play a lot of games, and we have a coach bus that takes us to every game and meals that, that pays for our, our athletes' meals on away games. But little things like this makes a difference in the recruiting pitch, right? You know, so a lot of our athletes do come from Middlesex County, but it helps sell to these out-of-county student athletes to come here to Middlesex, right? They know, wow, we get a coach bus to all of our games. We get meals paid for, not it seems so simple, but not every school does that, right? So while we do have a strong foundation here recruiting in Middlesex County, we're really branching out. We have incoming recruits next year coming from Indiana. We have a middle infielder coming from Middletown, Delaware, a right-handed pitcher from northeast Philly. Our catcher's coming from Mount Holly down in South Jersey. We have strong ties in Hudson County. Recruits coming from Bayonne consistently every single year. Elizabeth, a very good outfielder coming from Elizabeth. And now that I live out in Hunteren County, I'm starting to branch out there. Oh, we have an athlete coming from North Hunteren, Hunteren Central. So not only are we making our way around the state, we're also making our way around the country too. So all these athletes are willing to pay double tuition just to come here to be a part of the program. So it's a really exciting time. I look forward to hopefully many more years of success, and I thank you all for allowing me to say a few words today.
Thanks, Coach. We also have our, our women's soccer head coach, Adrian Giordano, to say a few words as well.
Hi, good morning, guys. Thank you again for having us here. Like Rocco said, my name is Adrian Giordano. I'm the head coach of the women's soccer team here. This upcoming fall, I'll be going into my third season. I took over the team after there were a lot of shutdowns because of COVID. I was able to create a roster from scratch here. We had our first team in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, was able to get fourteen student athletes here from nothing. And then we continued to have a great season. We were able to increase the roster size from fourteen to twenty last season in two thousand and twenty-two, which I think is one of the largest teams that we've had here in women's soccer history, as well as we doubled our wins and then some from the previous season. We also were able to increase goals scored. We had a student athlete, she scored twelve goals for us this season. She was in the top ten for all the junior colleges for goals scored, so we were very excited and happy to have that accomplishment. This upcoming fall season, we have nineteen girls for the student, for on our roster, excuse me, as well as thirteen of them are new incoming freshmen, and we have six returners. So that's just something that the girls are having a great experience. They're relaying that to their friends that are coming from their high schools, that are coming from their club teams. So for example, this, this upcoming season, we have four girls coming from the same high school who played with two girls from the same club team that go to a different high school. So they're just overall enjoying their experience together. They're spreading the word. They're looking forward to continuing not only their education, but also their athletic career as well. We also, for the first time, were invited to Upstate New York last season for a tournament, the Be Kind Tournament at North Country Community College. They were a great host. They invited us back this year as well. And then in addition to that overnight tournament, we are also invited down to Maryland this fall for another overnight trip to Branchow and play against the other county colleges down in Maryland that are D-three, but also there are some Division Two schools that are reaching out to us to play. So we're definitely making our name renowned back out in the area, tri-state area, if you will. Pretty much. So thank you again for your time.
Thanks, Adrian. And Adrian's done a phenomenal job. She's humble, so it's very difficult to build a soccer roster as quickly as she did. The team did not participate during the COVID year. So for her to be one of the biggest rosters in the state after not even fielding a team for, in two years is really remarkable. But again, just wrapping everything up, thank you again to everybody for your support here. There's a lot as well to look forward to in the future. We're moving up to Division Two for basketball next year, which again is advancing our program and advancing the profile of our athletics department. We have facility upgrade projects in just about every sport on the table. They'll give our, our student athletes a nice place to play and, and again, another very big recruiting tool. And again, that's with the support of the college. And again, just, just a lot to be positive about and a lot to look forward to in the years to come. So thank you again for your time. Thank you.
Any comments from any of the board members?
I have a comment. Trustee Roman.
Go ahead, Trustee Roman.
Well, first of all, good morning to everyone. I just wanted to take a minute to congratulate the athletic department. I take a lot of joy when I see the signing on LinkedIn, and I am certainly want to share that information. I just wanted to make a recommendation if it's not currently being done. So whenever we have a student athlete who really excels in their sport, whether it be All-American or some of these recognitions that we saw highlighted today, whether the municipalities, where they come from are giving that information, I think it would really be great for the administrations in those cities and towns to be able to really put that forth and share that with the community. It's a great marketing tool. Also, the schools that they come from, if they have, if they play in their schools to really market, that's a great marketing tool. But it's also important that we recognize those students' special achievements. So by contacting the mayor's office, maybe there's a little mini press conference or something that could be given to that student once, you know, school finishes, I think it would really go well to recognize the student, the families, and take pride in the product that is being done here at Middlesex with our student athletes.
So Trustee Roman, I want to respond. I love that idea, and I was just talking to Michelle about it earlier. We, we do that right now. We could probably do more of it, make sure that that information gets out to, you know, every possible municipality and mayor, but we are, we are doing some of that already, and so I think it's a great idea. And I'll also make sure that we tell the board more so that when you hear that from us directly, you can make sure that your communities are informed. Thank you for that idea.
Thank you, Trustee. Any of the trustees? I, I'd like to make a comment and recognize myself. I, you know, I say this at any meetings, my favorite part of the meeting is always the presentation because invariably I learn so much and obviously love when we talk about, you know, academics, et cetera, but here the success of our student athletes, and it's so important. And I, I want to point out one of the things that Mr. Mooney said, I just thought it was so important when you talk about, I mean, there's success on the field and candidly, that breeds success in the classroom. And you know, you're, all of the coaches and all of the teams, you know, you are molding these young persons for the future. I mean, you know, they, you're, you're a role model, you're a teacher, you're a coach, you're an advisor, you're, you know, you're serving so many different capacities. So the value that the coach, the teacher brings to this process to not just excel on the field and have such incredible accomplishments. I mean, you talk about All-Americans and national champions and all the sports we participate in. And, you know, candidly, that just leads to such a level of robustness of the college collegiate experience. I mean, classroom is critical, but, you know, having a feel for the campus and having a full experience and a, a life-making or life-altering opportunity, it's, it's incredible, you know, what you're doing for these, you know, young persons. But when you talk about, you know, the importance of the GPA and the graduation rates and the opportunities for them to pursue, you know, professionally in this county or professionally elsewhere or athletically elsewhere, I mean, to me, it's just so incredible, you know, the, the discipline, the self-esteem, you know, so many, at so many different levels, it's just so critical. So I really want to say, you know, very impressive, you know, Mr. Constantino, Ms. Giordano. I know what it's like to only have fourteen players. Very hard to field a team, a healthy team when you only have fourteen. I mean, that's incredible and what you're able to do and to, to build that. And, and Mr. Mooney, two hundred wins, and at this rate, by next year, you might And and Mr. Mooney, two hundred wins and at this rate, by next year, you might be back for three hundred, you know, I mean, it's it's unbelievable. But, uh, but honestly, I I I do just want to say, and I don't mean to take up too much time. That it is critical. It's it's an important part of the collegiate experience. It's important what you're doing. You know, I think it makes everybody in this county, uh, proud. And, uh, never forget, as as you've noted, the importance of the academics in that process. But having said that, you know, to really, uh, be successful on and off the field, I think is just a an incredible attribute. And and kudos, uh, to to this board, to this administration, to all of you. So thank you. Yes, I'm going to recognize, uh, Mr. Trustee Pluri first, and then I will move to you, uh, that's Trustee Brutus, I believe. And then we'll move to you, Chris.
Thank you very much. I I wouldn't take too much of your time, but it's really impressive. You know, I just want to build on what Trustee Taffet just said. In the professional environment, not just off the field and in the classroom, but also in the professional world. Uh, we do see when teams are put together of people from various sectors, various personalities and backgrounds. How they struggle to gel as a team and function. And we definitely recognize that people who are affiliated to sports in college or or afterwards. They definitely ju- you know, get into the team a much faster and work well, so I really commend the program here for what the what you guys are. Able to, uh, establish and and do and looking forward to hearing more next year. Uh, but I also heard that the basketball team went up to to, uh, North Country. A country that I got educated from. I'm hoping somewhere in St. Lawrence, Potsdam area, Upstate New York. Uh, so I hope it's a beautiful place and I hope you continue to go there and play for us. Thank you.
Well, well said. Thank you, Trustee Glory. Uh, Trustee Brutus?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, address the. The athletes and and our coaches and student athletes. I think, um, every year I look forward to this presentation. And usually Trustee Taffet and Trustee Anderson and I, uh, all reference, um, our our past. Engagement in in being collegiate athletes and the importance of it, and so I'm glad to see that. Our enrollment is increasing and don't want to repeat what my colleagues have already said. I completely concur. Um, very, very important to formulate those skills both on and off the field. And to make sure our academics are moving forward as well with our athletes, which it sounds like it is and is extremely important. I do have a question now, um, with respect to our student athletes that are interested in transferring. Onto a four-year school or to a di- different division, are we, are we seeing that happen? Are there additional opportunities that they're able to capture? Or are they predominantly, you know, completing their athletic career at Middlesex?
So Trustee Brutus, you can answer that question. I know that Rocco and the coaches are up to to do so.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, so again, my name is Adrian Giordano, the women's soccer head coach. Um, I actually have a handful of student athletes that. Um, are transferring and they are going to continue their academic and their athletic careers. Um, I've had the, um, most recently, we actually went to Kane University this spring and we played a seven v seven game against them. Um, so it was an opportunity for their coach to see our players and. One of our girls is actually transferring to Kane and she's having the opportunity to try out for their team. Um, which is a great opportunity for her and we also have connections with, um, Bloomfield College. We had a couple of girls at the Division Two school. They were offered athletic and academic scholarships there and they went on and continued. Both their athletic and academic career there. Um, and I also was in contact with Rosemont and, um. Bryn Mar out in Pennsylvania. They are, um, planning on, if they can, attending some of our games this fall to, um. Recruit our players here, so we have. Multiple four-year schools that are constantly reaching out to us that I have formed a relationship with over the last three years. And we've had a handful of girls that do continue, not only academic-wise, but also athletically, um, at the Division Two and the Division Three level.
Great. Thank you.
I'll just elaborate real quickly on what we do for our baseball athletes. Um, so I mentioned in our fall season, that's really where the recruiting process starts for a lot of our athletes. So when we put together a fall schedule, about ninety to ninety-five percent of the teams that we play are all NCAA schools. So we'll play Felician College, St. Elizabeth, uh, Chestnut Hill, Immaculata, uh, Caldwell, Dominican. Um, Penn State Abington, so it's getting these college coaches on our campus to see our athletes, whether they're a first-year or second-year athlete. But the other big thing that we do in the fall is we have a a showcase day. So we'll invite, for example, we had twelve schools come, uh, we did it September twenty-third this past fall. We had Mometh here. Delaware State, American International, uh, Drew, a lot of the schools from the NJAC, um, that were all here. Um, we'll run our guys through a little bit of a showcase event just so they can, you know, interact with them in a in a, um. Less stressful environment. It's not a live game. They can pull guys to the side, talk to them. And then the other thing that we do is we really use our our marketing tools with, uh, you know, our Twitter. Instagram, uh, and we have a field level account which, uh, we're connected with hundreds of coaches all across the, uh, really the state and the country. To be able to market our athletes out there, um, because let's face it, social media is huge and and a lot of coaches follow us on there and. And we'll get, you know, direct messages, hey, where's this guy going? Was he still uncommitted? What's his GPA? What's he studying? So really, our ultimate goal is, you know, to prepare our guys to be able to go on and be successful at the four-year school, both academically and athletically. Because then in turn, prospective student athletes are going to see that and say, oh, I remember, you know, Gio, he was a a senior when I was a sophomore. Now he's going on to play at at FDU. I can go to Middlesex and do the same thing. So, um, that's that's really how we we run it with our baseball program.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's pretty much repeated across all sports. They do a very good job to where if a student athlete wants to get to the four-year level. We, just about every single one of them is able to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for the robust presentation, uh, and discussion. So congratulations to all. Um, we can keep, uh, moving along. I think now, uh. We're going to look to move the board into executive session, uh, Mr. Hoffman. If you would set forth why the board will be going into executives.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the board will consider the approval of a memorandum of agreement with the faculty union. For the period from July one, two thousand twenty to June thirty, two thousand twenty-six. And an amendment to the Full-Time Management Personnel Handbook, dealing with the new terminal leave program. It's anticipated that the board will take action on these matters during the general session when they return to the regular session.
Excellent. Thank you. We're looking forward to, uh, to that executive session. Uh, may I have a motion to move into executive session? Moved by Trustee Pluri, may I have a second?
Second, Trustee Jeff Lani.
Second, thank you. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I'll call upon Dr. McCormick to explain the logistics for conducting, uh, this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Vice Chair Taffet. So, uh, first and foremost, um, the trustees will remain in this room, uh, with, uh. Frank and Jeff and John and Joe and me, and all others who are here in person, please go to the lobby. Uh, those trustees who are on Zoom, stay on Zoom. And those, uh, members of the public who are on Zoom will be put into a breakout room. And you'll remain there until it's time to come back into, um, open session. So please, uh. Those who are moving out, go ahead and grab a cup of coffee and move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you have your own?
I did. Okay.
Okay, welcome back. I want to thank everyone in the audience for their patience. I know those executive sessions during the meetings. As much as they are needed, obviously can disrupt the the flow overall, but thank you. Mr. Hoffman, please advise whether the board will take action on any of the matters discussed in executive session today.
Yes, the board will take action at the during the general session of this meeting on the two matters that were discussed in executive session.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I think now we can move on to our committee reports. Uh, do we need a motion to?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, trustee Oris. I think trustee Oris made a motion to return from executive session. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Rajah, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, we're officially back. So and so now we can move on to our committee reports. Thank you. But let's move to academic and student affairs. I call upon trustee Rajah to present the academic and student affairs resolutions.
Uh, good, good morning, everybody. Before I start, I want to recognize that Mr. Anderson's brave and life-saving event on this uh, Monday. And I'm sure everybody knows about it. So that he's our committee member and I want to recognize that. Now I would ask Dr. Linda Shear to present our resolution, please.
Thank you, Mr. Rajah. We have three resolutions for the academic and student affairs that relate to grants totaling about fifty thousand dollars. Two of them are from the Office of the Secretary of Higher Education. One of them relates to the Hunger Free Campus Initiative. One of them relates to an initiative to re-enroll students with some college and no degree. And the third is a small grant from the New Jersey Council for the Humanities. Um, it's the philosophy group who has a grant to support a philosophy walk and talk. So those are the three grant resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to make a motion for the uh, resolution one, two, and three.
Moved by Mr. Rajah, may we have a second?
Second, Bob Wong.
Seconded by trustee Orus. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Rajah. Uh, let's move to the finance committee. Uh, since I'm the chair today, we have trustee uh, Jethwani, who will be, I will call upon to present the finance resolutions.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Taffet. Um, yes, I'd like to ask um, Mr. Malteino to present the resolutions.
Yes, good morning, trustee Jethwani. Uh, there are ten finance resolutions uh, for consideration today. In summary, resolutions one and two consist of purchases and awards under corporate agreements, exempt purchases, fair and open bid practices, contract renewals, uh, and cancellation of contracts for goods and services for this month. Uh, including but not limited to custodials, supplies, forklifts, uh, cellular uh, signal booster, media equipment for high flex classrooms and chiller repairs for the Performing Arts Center. These purchases and awards are provided through operating funds, uh, capital funding through minor capital, chapter twelve capital funding and or grant funding. Resolution number three represents a contract amendment and resolution four is for supplemental insurance to provide for any gaps in employees' insurance needs at no cost to the college. Uh, resolution number five. Yeah, yes, yes. Um, yes, that that's for Aflac um with no cost to the college. Resolution number five is a disdivision of tangible personal property uh, through gov deals uh. And they are for assets for disposal with net book values less than five thousand dollars, which is under the federal threshold for this uh, disposition. Uh, resolution six A through M are for payments to various contractors, architects, and engineers for construction contracts on campus previously approved by this body. Resolution number seven is for the authorization of legal fees to the Weiner Law Group uh, regarding labor matters for the month of March of two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Resolution eight is for the consolidation of uh, capital, uh, chapter twelve capital funding into one project for the physical education facility. And resolution number nine is for the authorization of the college to enter into inter-local agreements with the county of Middlesex, whereby the county, the college agrees to reimburse the county uh, for uh, and distribute uh, funds granted to the college uh, from the state of New Jersey Department of Treasury for the purpose of the construction of the CIO improvements. And whereby the county is responsible for all grant compliance and legal and financial compliance and filings. And the last resolution is resolution number ten is the authorization of the college to engage the law firm of Lerner David, uh, specializing in the field of trademarks and patents of Cranford, New Jersey. This is for initial registration of the college's trademark uh, in the amount of four thousand four hundred and forty dollars. So uh, that concludes the finance resolution. Trustee gets one.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malteino. Um, Chair Taffet, I would like to make a motion to approve uh, resolutions one to ten.
Thank you. Uh, a motion has been made. May we have a second?
Second, Rajah.
Trustee Rajah seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries of for the record of Ms. Rowa, please note that I am abstaining on resolutions six J and seven A. Thank you. Let's move to the human resources committee. I call upon trustee Oris to present the human resources resolutions.
Thank you, Chairman Taffet. I call upon uh, Mr. Morgan for a report.
Thank you, trustee Oris. Uh, this month includes sixty-four recommended items in total in the areas of new hires, change of status, separations of employment, miscellaneous personnel actions, and as well our annual holiday calendars for each bargaining unit um, for the academic fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm happy to answer any further questions that the board may have on those resolutions.
Hearing no questions, I would like to make a motion to approve all resolutions in the categories of hires, change of status, separations, and miscellaneous.
Okay. Uh, do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries. Again, I will call upon trustee Oris to present the general resolutions.
Thank you, Chairman Taff. I would like to make a motion to approve resolutions one and two. I would also like to make the motion to.
Why don't we just take those two first?
Okay, okay. Is there a, a motion has been made for resolutions one and two? Is there a second?
A second, trustee Jethwani.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Trust the Oris, please continue.
Thank you. I would also like to make two more uh, resolutions. Uh, I would like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between Middlesex College and the Middlesex College Faculty Union. Local nineteen forty covering period, July one, twenty twenty to July thirty, twenty twenty-six.
June thirty.
I'm sorry, June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
You want to do it all together?
Yeah, why do order them?
One at a time. Okay, so a motion has been made for the, I'm not going to read it in its entirety, but for the uh, the AFT
Contract.
Contract uh, through June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Is there a second to the motion?
Second, Rajah.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, and we're going to do one more.
Thank you.
Yes, trustee Oris.
I would like to also make a ma- a motion to approve an amendment to the Middlesex College Full-Time Management Personnel Handbook. These last two resolutions were the matters that were discussed in executive session.
Okay, motion uh, to amend the management personnel handbook. Is there a second?
I said it ended before.
Second trustee Polori, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries. I just want to note one thing, uh, President McCormick, uh, well, first of all, I just want to say congratulations on, on the fact that the, that it's adopted. Congratulations for everyone. Meaning, you know, this is important to uh, to employees as it is to, to management as it is to, to the college itself. And so it's certainly been a a long process. Um, and uh, pleased that it is resolved, resolved going forward. Um, I don't know if, if you wanted to make a comment or say anything.
So, so thanks trustee Taffet. No, uh, we, we certainly here at the college um en- enjoy a great college community, supported by our board and by folks who are external to the college. And it's important that we all work together toward our mission and toward serving students and the community. And I, I welcome um, the AFT members, you know, to fully participate back in the life of the college. Uh, your voice as faculty is particularly important in college governance and of course, critical to um, improving and reviewing and creating new curricula. So we were happy to have this settled and we look forward to working closely with everyone beginning um, in July. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would also just like to ask just one question, uh, Mr. Hoffman, not related to this matter, but just because everything else throughout the meeting is uh, described and discussed, resolutions one and two, which were only described as resolutions one or two pertaining, can you just broadly uh, say what they pertain to?
In the general resolutions, the first resolution terminates the, the emergency proclamation that the board issued during the pandemic in March seventeen, two thousand twenty. That, that, that continued, certain sections of it were eliminated earlier, but that continued on, gave the president certain authority. Since the uh, the governor has eliminated his executive orders and the president, as of May eleventh, said the pandemic is over. This resolution mirrors that to say the uh, emergency resolution that was adopted before will not be terminated. The second deals with the, the CIO project and it's an inter-local agreement with the county. That it primarily explains that the college is going to uh, lease property to the county. The county is going to build facilities, money is going to come into the college, how the college will transmit the money to the county and how auditing will take place and other things of the financial nature that with Mr. Malteino, we worked out with the county. And the county was very satisfied with the agreement.
Thank you, council. Yes, I just don't like to take action with the folks that don't have an agenda in front of them to not uh, be aware of what we might be uh, discussing, so thank you. Um, so uh, moving on, uh, is Mr. Anjum with me? Uh, is Khalid Anjum on behalf of Middlesex County with us this morning? We'd love to hear from uh, from Khalid on behalf of our county board of commissioners. Mr. Anjum?
Uh, thank you so much for having me. It's always such a great pleasure and honor to uh, sit in and learn so much from these meetings. I'm grateful to you uh, for inviting me on behalf of the Middlesex Bo- uh, County Board of Commissioners. Uh, I bring greetings and congratulations on the contract to the FT and the college. I am uh, extraordinarily positive that going forward, this uh, partnership is going to yield results that will be setting in motion uh, a great uh, service opportunity for the entire county and its residents. And so on behalf of the board, uh, I am uh, congratulating the team here. And uh, for the board of trustees, uh, congratulations uh, on uh, an extraordinary program that you put together, uh, Chair Taffet, uh, Chair Finkelstein, and the whole board actually. And I, I'm extraordinarily uh, impressed with the um, with the uh, with the athletics program and all of the wonderful initiatives that are going out there. And it just reinforces to me and to the board, the synchronization between the investments that are being made and the commitments that are being made by the county and the college uh, to go forward in the uh, initiative with the uh, improvements that are going on with the master plan and being led uh, by uh, Chair Traffic Taffet. I mean, it's incredible. That's going to be a destination uh, un- like any in the country, an athletic destination that uh, will be unlike any on other in the country. And I compliment the synergy of the county government and the board of trustees and the staff and the faculty and the unions of Middlesex College to make, bring this uh, great institution forward. And that's uh, all I have. Again, I like to compliment Mr. Rocco and uh, all the other coaches at CJ. And uh, I forget the name of the soccer coach.
Giordano.
Yes, Coach Giordano. So please accept my congratulations on a fantastic program. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, as always, uh, Mr. Anjum, I want to thank you on behalf of the board for your articulate and thoughtful comments. Certainly is important to be able to get that feedback, you know, from the county. And it truly is a partnership between the college and the county.
The last one is.
My pleasure, great pleasure. Uh, trustee Taffet, it's an honor to be here.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right. Let's move, keep uh, moving. Report of council, Mr. Hoffman. Report, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your brevity. Uh, report of our president, Dr. McCormick.
So if I should have, I'll try to be brief. Um, but this, this is an important time of the year for the college. This is high celebration season and every single day for the past several weeks, there's been all kinds of celebrations focused on students primarily, but also on employees. So I'm going to focus today on students because tomorrow is commencement. Next slide. So we're celebrating a student achievement. Next slide. One thing we've done in the last several weeks is a lot of uh, honor society induction ceremonies. We now have five honor societies and each one has had over the past several weeks, a ceremony uh, inducting new members. And so celebrating student achievement at the highest level and particularly in different kinds of disciplines. So we have a brand new honor society this year called Alpha, Alpha, Alpha that the criterion is you have to be a first generation student, first in your, your family to go to college and graduate. So that there was a celebration for those new members. Next slide. We have a nursing honor society, Alpha Delta New, which happens to be ADM, which is Associate Degree in Nursing. They had their celebration. Next slide. Education's uh, honor society led by a faculty member Patty Anne McMahon. Wonderful ceremony. Dr. Scher and I were there. Next slide. The art uh, honor society, uh, Kappa Pi. Uh, and there's a professor Susan Altman, the sponsor. Next slide. And then of course Phi Theta Kappa, which is the international honor society for students who attend a two-year institution. We had a large number, as you see, being inducted recently, and many of the members um, of different organizations who are leaders are often also Phi Theta Kappa members. Next slide. And so we also had honors convocation. An honors convocation is the time in which we honor students who have the highest performing grade point average in their uh, program of study. And so we had students from all over the college come and be recognized for getting uh, the best grades in their, their program and discipline. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. And uh, on Monday, we have the nursing pinning ceremony. We have dental hygiene coming up next week and it's one of the most moving ceremonies I get to attend every year. Um, we have, as you know, a partnership, partnering program with Hakkim Sac, Reading Health. They're very generous. They, they pay for this event. Um, and so we had all fifty-three or most of the fifty-three members of the class of twenty um, twenty-three nursing students there with their family members. And they were pinned by their faculty member and they spoke about their journey. It was a lovely event and we're happy to be partners with HMH to um, provide the next generation of nurses going out into the world. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. And then, of course, commencement, which is tomorrow. Next slide. This is a photo from last year's commencement, which was a lovely event, and we honored again, you know, seven hundred fifty or so students who were there in person to receive their diploma cover and be acknowledged as graduating from Middlesex College. We'll be doing that again tomorrow. Again, seven hundred seventy-five students or so who are going to be graduating. We have a total of 1,459 students in the class of 2023, and about half of them again will be at the Jersey Mike's Arena for Monday the Rack to be acknowledged. I want to acknowledge you today, all the members of the commencement committee, led by Kevin Delina and Richard Cole, but it includes here our own trustee Amve Patel and many of the folks here with me today. Thank you for your hard work all year long in planning what will be the best day of the year for the students, and I hope to see all of you there tomorrow. Next slide. One person you'll see her tomorrow is a woman named Zakiya Forbes. I talked about her before. I happened to run into Zakiya last fall at the Student Activities Fair here on the quad. She was looking for a table. I found her the table. I'm talking to her. And by the way, I, I made a mistake, which I usually don't make. Zakiya is, you know, a little older, and she had a young woman there who looked like a college-age student, her, her daughter, it turned out, who's a junior in high school, and I thought the junior was the student. And I was saying, can I help you find where your daughter wants to go? So my daughter's not coming here next year. It's, it's me. I'm here, right? So we chatted. We had a great conversation, and it turns out that Zakiya at that point was the managing editor for Covadas, our student newspaper. So I got to know her really well through the fall when she had that role. She graduated in December. I told you before, she got a full scholarship to Columbia University as an adult student. And so she's telling her story tomorrow, because tomorrow she's our commencement speaker. She's our valedictorian. An amazing young woman, amazing story. I don't want to steal her thunder. But there she is in the left photo back in December when she was grad, finishing here at the college and moving on to Columbia. And if you notice there on the right, when I saw her a few weeks ago, look at what's on her sweatshirt. She's a proud student now at Columbia, and I'll steal one piece of her thunder. She had four courses at Columbia while she's working full-time and raising two children on her own, and she got a four-point O. So amazing story to tell tomorrow. You want to be there. I see shaking his head there in the back, Connor Chung, who is our Student Government Association president, and Connor Chung will be at commencement, because he's a graduate. Will be a graduate tomorrow, and Connor will be our college banner bearer. So a lot of celebration here in the room. Amve will be on stage from last year's group, Zakiya, this year's valedictorian, and Connor as a banner bearer. So I look forward to the day. It's an amazing day. If you can't come in person, we'll send you the live stream. And of course, we'll send you the link afterwards. You can watch the recording. Best day of the year. Thank you.
That's great. There's a tough act to follow, but that's tremendous. All of the good things happening on campus, and I know we're all looking forward to, to tomorrow. So thank you. No one's on Zoom with a public comment. Okay, so I just, is there anyone, well, let's just see, is there any old business? And no, any old business?
No, no, no.
Do we have any new business?
Neither.
I, I would like to just briefly comment, if I may. Mr. Rajah mentioned Kyle Anderson. Again, I'd just like to articulate that just a little bit more so that folks perhaps have a little more of a perspective. Apparently, trustee Anderson, who's also obviously our county superintendent of schools, literally saved somebody from in a burning house this past week when he saw a house that was on fire as he was traveling back to his office, and literally, you know, put himself in harm's way, so to speak, in that he helped to go in there. Emergency assistance came forward, and he, and I believe a member of the police department in Edison, I believe it was.
I'm not sure even, I think he just volunteered. He just did it.
Yeah, and so he literally helped pull someone from a burning building, burning home, and helped to save a life. So really a courageous act. I wish he was here because I know we'd all like to compliment him for, for his valor and for, you know, what he, kind of person that he is. That really epitomizes trustee Anderson. So kudos to Kyle Anderson. And so, and perhaps because he's a member of this board, I say kudos to the board for helping to, to save somebody, but really a heroic act. So pleased with that. I also just want to note, again, just on, on the contract, just to be able to say, if I may, that I, I know it was a long process, but certainly I think we're all proud to have ultimately concluded that process and come to a place that we are, you know, we, we could all be accepting of in terms of, you know, that's fair to our teachers, professionals, administrators, and fair from a college perspective as well. So I think that's important, and I know that it was, like I said, a long process, but one that I think we ultimately got it right. And I hope that everybody, you know, in any agreement, everyone's not happy in any compromise in life. But having said that, I think we look forward to, you know, making sure that we move this college forward in a productive way. And so I, I thank everybody involved in that process.
Chairman, if I may for one second.
Yes, you may.
I'm not at all surprised with trustee Anderson's act, knowing him, knowing his personality. He's extremely passionate, and I really admire his courage for doing what he did on Monday. We talked about the student achievement. I think the president McCormick articulated that. I just want to compliment administrative staff who is working here full-time, and still she was able to get her PhD. I would like to congratulate Michelle Campbell for getting his PhD. That's all I have, Chip.
Well done. Is there any other new business or any other comments since I kind of started that? Thank you for your indulgence. Let's move to comments from the audience. I, we, Ms. Payne is not on today. So let's move to comments from the audience. Ms. Rowa, has anyone registered to address the board?
Vice Chair Taffet, yes, we have one individual registered.
Okay, excellent. It's now time for public comment pursuant to section seven point four of the board bylaws, which govern participation at board meetings and the provisions of the bylaws. The following protocols will be observed. Only those individuals who registered at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting with the Assistant Secretary of the Board will be called upon to address the board. The college staff member will announce your name in the order in which you are registered. If you're participating on Zoom, please be sure your name, as it appears on Zoom, matches the name that you use to register. Preface your comments by announcing your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation. You will have three minutes to speak. Please direct all of your comments to me in my capacities for chair this morning. Also, a college staff member will announce when thirty seconds of time is remaining. Again, when your three minutes are up. Having said that, you said we, you indicated we have one person?
Chairman, the one speaker registered is Charlie Cradaville. Charlie, your three minutes begin now.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you.
I should say trustees, my apologies. Congratulations to the grads. My name's Charlie Cradaville. I'm a New Brunswick resident editor of New Brunswick today. So, you know, a, a, a great accomplishment for everybody who's graduated, and also congratulations to the workers on the new contracts. I wanted to ask if they've been ratified by the unions.
Adopting one, please?
I can answer that, Mr. Cradaville. Yes, the AFT ratified the agreement, and we were notified on Monday.
Great. Well, that's wonderful, and I'm pleased to hear it. You know, the rest of my comments, I just wanted to talk about this board and transparency. And so I will start by saying thank you for continuing the hybrid meetings so that folks can, you know, watch and participate remotely if they're unable to make it to the place you're at. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate, I guess it's Mr. Vice Chair, your asking questions to elicit information about the resolutions that were passed today so that the public can hear that. I will note that, you know, it's really unconscionable that the board still has a twenty-four-hour advance sign-up requirement for people to speak here. For folks who didn't get on the call before eight thirty AM, the, the link disappears at eight thirty AM on your website. So I was able to get on the call before eight thirty AM, but anybody who tried to get in at eight thirty-one probably couldn't find the link because it vanished from your website. So I would ask you to, maybe the trustees could, you know, pretend you're not a trustee and try to find information about the board on your website. And I think you'll find it's much harder to find than, than you would like. And I know many of you are involved in other boards, other, you know, government entities, and, and, you know, unfortunately, this board is not using the best practices so that your agenda says the word resolutions, but no one can see the title of any resolution. So while it's nice to, to hear some discussion about it during the meeting, you should really be advanced noticing the public on what it is you're actually planning to pass.
Thirty seconds remain.
The agendas don't include that. You also don't appear to be recording this meeting. So I would ask that future meetings, if you're already doing the hybrid Zoom, you should record them and make those recordings available to the public, just like you're going to do for commencement. And yeah, make sure you're actually making it easy for people to find the link to join the meeting. It's not in the agenda, and it's hard to find on your website, and it vanishes once the meeting begins. So I'd really ask you to look into these things and try to be more transparent.
Our three minutes have concluded.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that's registered? That's it. Okay. Dr. McCormick, would you like to offer any final remarks?
So Vice Chair Taffet, I would, and I want to respond first to Mr. Cradaville. Your, your points are taken about the Zoom link. I'll make sure we talk to IT that the Zoom link for the board meeting stays on for the full time of the board meeting, so they can join whatever they want. And just to point out, the consent agenda, which concludes a description of every resolution that's on the agenda, is posted to the college website in the same area that you found the details about the, the meeting. So just check around. It's always posted several days in advance, and that includes a description of every single resolution. In this case, there were two that were brought to the board after executive session. They were not on the agenda. But every other resolution, including ones, the numbers one and two, that Vice Chair Taffet referenced earlier under general, they were on the consent agenda. So look there. I do want to say one more thing. So besides commencement, which is the best day of the year, we also have days that give us a little pause and sadness, and one of those is coming up on June the first. So you mentioned, Mr. Blair, earlier, and stole my thunder, that one of our colleagues got her EDD recently, and I'm very proud of her for that and happy for her. She has found a job in Maryland and is on her path, I know, to becoming community college president, and this next job will help her get another step toward that. We've had five great years of working with you, Michelle. I mentioned before to the board and board committee meetings, I'll say it here in public, that you started your new job as the VPIA here at Middlesex College, the same day the board lost their mind and made me the acting president. And so we've had that journey together, and a lot of things weren't really nailed down those first few months and years of our time together. We've gotten to a good place with support of this board and the hard work of everybody in this room. I'm going to change mics. I've upset my mic. Everybody's hard work, but the leadership like yours that made it happen. So we're going to miss you, but we wish you well, and we're going to celebrate because hopefully at this moment, your colleague of mine, Janet, is pulling out a cake. And so when the meeting's over here in a minute, when I finish talking, and my colleague Gary does as well, we're going to have a slice of cake to wish you well and send you on to your next step in your journey. Congratulations.
I, I think I can truly say on behalf of the board that you were, have been a very valued asset of this institution, and you will be missed. We are sorry to see you go, but always pleased when folks candidly achieve, you know, great opportunity and have a chance to, to grow and, and brighten their own future. And who knows, maybe our paths will cross again someday, but congratulations.
Doesn't seem like five years, does it? What do they always say? Time flies when you're having fun.
Well, okay. Well, as we have no further business to conduct this morning, the board is officially adjourned until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is set for Wednesday, June 21, 2023, at eight thirty AM, right here in the Parkview Room in West Hall and on Zoom, with a link to be posted on the college website.